Good evening and welcome to tonight's public hearing. This hearing will include Columbus City Council's Health and Human Services, Finance, and Workforce Development Committees. I am Councilmember Priscilla Tyson, President Pro Tem of City Council and Chair of these Committees. Before we begin, please be aware that this hearing has been recorded for rebroadcast on CTV, the Columbus Government Television Channel 3. The rebroadcast schedule is available at www.columbus.gov. This hearing is one in a series of bi-weekly committee hearings that I hold in order to review legislation and the committees that I chair. This includes Health and Human Services, Finance, and Workforce Development Committees. The goal of these hearings is to promote transparency and provide an opportunity for city residents to learn and to speak on legislation that impacts their lives. There will be occasions when a committee is not covered because legislation isn't always scheduled for each committee. The intent of each hearing is to review legislation that will be on City Council's agenda for the following two weeks. Tonight, we will hear information on legislation in the Finance and Human Services Committees. Presenters this evening include from Health and Human Services Committee from Columbus Public Health Nancy Bechtel, Chief Nursing Officer and Assistant Health Commissioner, and from the Finance Committee from the Treasurer's Office Deborah Clea, our Treasurer, and from Finance and Management Department Christopher Long, our Fiscal Manager. I will begin with legislation in the Health and Human Services Committee and ask Assistant Health Commissioner Nancy Bechtel to present legislation from Columbus Public Health. Good evening.
Thank you, and good evening, Pro Tem Councilwoman Tyson. So, we only have one piece of legislation for tonight, and it's to modify the 27 Interpretation and Translation Services Contract, Ordinance Number 2693-2017. This ordinance is needed to modify three existing contracts for in-person interpretation services, telephone interpretation services, and document translation services with Access to Interpreters LLC, Vocal Link Incorporated, and Universe Technical Translation Incorporated, respectively. PO 055302 with Access to Interpreters LLC needs to increase by $30,000 for a total contract amount of $180,000. PO 050406 with Vocal Link Incorporated will increase by $5,000 for a total contract amount of $25,000. And PO 050409 with Universal Technical Translation Inc. will increase by $15,000 for a total contract amount of $30,000. These services will provide Columbus Public Health with the ability to provide translation services in conjunction with these agencies at our location of 240 Parsons Avenue and our nearby health clinics. Our interpretation services throughout the year are pretty broad. Our Access to Interpreters provides about 1,500 face-to-face interpretation interactions throughout the year for about 2,700 hours of interpretation, and Vocal Link provides about 1,300 phone interpretation interactions for us for the year.
Nancy, can you just share why this is so important to the residents of our community?
Certainly. Thank you for that question. We at Columbus Public Health and with the city, we serve anyone who comes to our doors to get our services, and we want to make sure that people can understand what we need to understand from them so that we can understand what their issues are and so that when we give them instructions or services, they can understand what they need to do to be healthy.
And we know we serve in Columbus. We are a welcoming city and welcome diverse individuals in our community, and we want to make sure that they have the ability to stay healthy. And so by providing this interpretation services, as you just mentioned, we're able to understand if they have any health concerns based upon the language that they speak, and we in turn can then help manage and help them to manage their healthcare and meet their healthcare needs by having these services. So it's very important for our city. So thank you very much. And this legislation is for a total of, this will increase by 15,000, so you have 15, 35, $50,000, I think, in total. 15, 5, and 30. $50,000 total. All right. Thank you very much. I will now transition to legislation in the Finance Committee. I'm going to ask our Treasurer, Treasurer Clea, to cover legislation from her office. Good evening.
Good evening, President Pro Tem Tyson. This evening, I have two ordinances to cover. The first is Ordinance 2808-2017. What it is, is a modification of the City Treasurer's banking contracts with JP Morgan Chase and Huntington Merchant Services. JP Morgan provides the city's operating account, payroll accounts, and ACH tax accounts, and we are in the fifth year of a banking contract of 10 years that was bid out in 2012 and awarded in 2013. Where the Huntington Merchant Services contract that is being modified is a contract for credit card processing services on behalf of other city agencies. In this regard, the agencies covered under this modification will be the Treasurer's Office, Building and Zoning, the Department of Finance for Fleet, Human Resources, the Department of Health, Public Service, and Public Utilities. The amount overall for the credit card piece with Huntington is $1,003,000. I believe that's right. Let me just double-check. And the additional amount for JP Morgan Chase is $72,500. I think that probably covers that for that piece of legislation. The next piece of legislation isn't in the Legis藏system yet, but it is for the City Treasurer's Office E-Payment Services Contract. In this particular case, the Division, or sorry, the Department of Public Utilities has requested that we add $80,000 to that contract with First Data, and so that will be forthcoming. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
And it's going to be $80,000 for First Data for the e-payments for Public Utilities payments?
That's correct.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Finally, in the Finance Committee, we'll have Chris Long presenting the legislation from the Department of Finance and Management.
Good evening, President Pro Tem Tyson.
Good evening, Chris.
Tonight, for your consideration, we have a total of 17 ordinances that we believe will be in front of council on October 23rd and October 30th. Their first ordinance is Ordinance 2508-2017. This seeks authority for the Finance and Management Director to enter into a contract for the option to purchase electric vehicles with Riker Properties Buyers Chevrolet and to enter into a contract for the option to lease electric vehicles with an option to purchase with Mike Albert Fleet Solutions.
Can you please discuss the bid waiver component of this ordinance?
Sure. The original RFP that went out had some very basic language with respect to the option to lease vehicles. During the RFP process, Mike Albert essentially came forward with some different leasing options for the city, namely something called an open-ended lease, which I came to learn is sort of the opposite of what I would say go and lease a standard vehicle for. It does not hold the city liable for mileage overages or damage to vehicles, and it gives us the ability to purchase the vehicle after 12 months at a discount. And so essentially, the way the math works out is it's cheaper to lease these with the option to buy them than it is to essentially purchase those through Riker or through Buyers. And just one other thing, President Pro Tem Tyson, before I forget, a portion of the funding for these electric vehicles will come from the Smart Cities Grant, and the original RFP did not put in some grant restrictions that the Smart Cities Grant requires. And so that was discovered later between our Purchasing Office and our Public Service Department. And so our Purchasing Office had to go back and modify the terms of the UTC to make sure that it complied with the grant restrictions so that we could use those funds.
Again, can you just kind of give me an example of, since I know we typically don't lease vehicles, we typically purchase vehicles. And so just kind of give me a hypothetical. So let's talk about a vehicle that, I don't know if you have an example of something, but if you could give me an example of what the car, the cost of the automobile, the electric car, and then, you know, since we are going to, I mean, obviously you just said we're not going to have to pay for theror damages, or we're not going to pay for the overage and mileage, but just to try to share with me, because normally there's some residual that you pay on a lease when you lease a car, so just can you give me the numbers of how this will work?
Sure. Excellent question. And I do have a few numbers in front of me. For instance, for a 2018 Chevrolet Volt, which is one of the vehicle types that we anticipate purchasing, Mike Albert Leasing will lease to own for the city for that vehicle, it's $28,645 would be the lease cost, and then we would own it at the end of the lease. Versus purchasing that from Buyers, the cost of that vehicle would be $30,895, or about a $2,200 savings to the city. And there are other examples I'm happy to supply your office with. One of the, when I asked the question of our own purchasing office, why would Mike Albert be able to, you know, charge us that much less? Essentially, they're going to pass along to the city a federal tax incentive for the purchase of electric vehicles. In fact, the number is they're going to pass on about 50% of the federal tax credit they get to the city, whereas Buyers and Riker weren't either able or willing to do that. So a big part of that ability for them to be cheaper is they're willing to share 50% of their federal tax credit with us.
Thank you. So if a Volt would, to purchase a Volt is $30,000, and say to lease, at the end of the lease, well, it's leased to own, so after a year, we would be paying $28,645 for the vehicle?
That's correct. And two payments. One is $14,823. That would be at the very beginning of the lease, and then at the end of the 12 months, we would pay the balance, which would be about another $14,000.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next ordinance is Ordinance 2516-2017. This seeks authority for the Finance and Management Director to enter into a contract for the option to purchase anti-icing/deicing equipment with Bell Equipment and to authorize the expenditure, of course, of $1 to establish the contract.
This is for estimated $500,000, and I'm assuming that we will expect to have this equipment in place for this winter season?
Yes, that's correct.
So we're not ready for the winter season?
I know I'm not.
No, we're not ready, but we're prepared when it gets here with this anti-icing and deicing equipment. This will be used for, and the primary user is public service.
That is correct.
All right. Thank you.
Our next ordinance is Ordinance 2621-2017. This seeks authority for the Finance and Management Director to enter into a universal contract with LKQ Keystone for the option to purchase auto glass and auto body parts, mainly by Fleet, used by Fleet Management to repair city vehicles.
Thank you.
Our next ordinance is Ordinance 2645-2017. This is another universal term contract. It seeks authority for the Finance and Management Director to enter into an option to purchase original equipment manufacturer truck parts with AMG Peterbilt of Columbus. And once again, this would be used primarily by Fleet Management.
I know that we just recently have the publication of our second quarter review, and I know that auto parts is a substantial portion of the fleet's budget. We spend approximately $4 million per year on parts. So how does this part spending look for this year?
We're tracking about $200,000 to $250,000 under budget this year for utilization of parts.
Wonderful. Thank you.
You're welcome. Our next ordinance, Ordinance 2652-2017. This seeks authority for the Director of the Department of Finance and Management to enter into an agreement for the management of the parking garage with Capital South Community Urban Redevelopment Corp. And this would be for the management of the underground parking garage being built on the Scioto Peninsula, right there by COSI.
I know that this is, the River Authority has issued a debt for $30 million to construct the garage, but it's backed by the city's commitment to pay the service on the debt. It is expected that the revenue collected from the garage will cover the debt service expenses, correct?
That is correct.
So the city will not be out of any dollars that we're anticipating. I want to welcome Councilmember Shannon Harden to this hearing this evening. So now, do we have similar contracts for our city garages?
We do have similar contracts for, yes, for public-use garages. I believe Cap South or Capital South, I believe they have a management agreement for the Fourth Street Garage, and there's another garage that escapes from me, President Pro Tem Tyson, but I could get that for you.
They have it for, I mean, manage the South Front Street Garage, and then those receipts from that garage have been higher and allowed us, which is really important, to pay the debt down more aggressively than we initially had anticipated on South Front Street. And do you know when this garage is going to be completed?
In discussions with our real estate management office, it's to be completed and operational before the dinosaur exhibit goes active, and I believe that exhibit starts on November 18th, so it will be operational before then.
We're looking excited to COSI bringing the dinosaur exhibit to our community, and certainly hopeful that not only will our residents, but individuals from all across Ohio and our neighboring states will come and see this dinosaur exhibit and hopefully stay at our hotels and bring some additional bed tax dollars to our community. So, go ahead. Thank you to the next piece of legislation.
Thank you. Our next ordinance is Ordinance 2658-2017. This seeks authority for the Finance and Management Director to renew a contract on behalf of the Facilities Management Division with K&amp;M Cleaning Service for custodial services at the Columbus Police Academy on Hague Avenue.
This is for $216,500, and this is the third of the fourth possible renewals, correct?
That's correct.
And I'm assuming that since we're renewing this contract, that we must be very pleased with the services?
They're doing a wonderful job, and they even, I believe, carry some additional safety designations that allow them to clean something as important and that has the safety restrictions necessary, such as our police academy.
Thank you. And certainly, as Councilmember Harden chairs Minority and Small Business, that we're pleased that we've been able to successfully engage our minority business enterprise, and I hope that they can continue providing the outstanding service that they've been over the past couple of contracts that they've had. So just really pleased, and certainly Councilmember Harden, who was focused on making sure that we're having minority and small businesses in our city to be successful, is appreciative of this piece of legislation.
Thank you very much.
Member Harden wants to say a few words about it.
Well, no, just thank you so much again, Chair Tyson, President Pro Tem, and thank you to the department for working with this minority business. This is just a question out of curiosity and maybe a bit of just not knowing. It says it's the third of four possible renewals. What happens after the fourth renewal?
Sure. Councilmember Harden, thank you. At that point, we would be required to rebid for the custodial services contract at the police academy, but as I mentioned to President Pro Tem Tyson, we're extremely happy with K&amp;M. They've done a wonderful job, I think, gone above and beyond in a lot of respects, not only doing the work, but providing us feedback on how to do the work better at the police academy. So, yeah, I mean, we're definitely planning on continuing that relationship into the fourth renewal. I know we're not there yet, but we're certainly very happy with the performance.
And certainly, anyone that gets a contract at the police academy, we know that they have to go through even more extensive process to be able to get those contracts because they're at the police academy. And again, just welcome this business that got the successful bid, and again, as you've mentioned, that we've just mentioned, they've done an outstanding job. And again, that's for $216,500.
Our next ordinance is Ordinance 2682-2017, and this seeks authority for the Director of Finance and Management to renew a service agreement with Lease Harbor LLC for the real property and lease data base software utilized by our real estate management office.
Thank you. And Kelly does a fantastic job in that real estate office. So again, thank you. And this is for $27,000.
That's correct. Our next ordinance is Ordinance 2692-2017. This seeks authority for the Finance and Management Director to modify an existing universal term contract for the option to purchase additional Hologic test kits and supplies with GenProbe and Service Incorporated for utilization by our Columbus Public Health.
And Nancy Bechtel was still in the room, and so she knows how important these STD test kits are to the comatose health, but most important to the residents that are coming in that want to make sure that they hopefully do not have an STD, but should they have that, be able to get the correct treatment. So this is really important legislation for the women and families in our community.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next piece of legislation that we have for your consideration is Ordinance 2696-2017. This seeks authority for the Finance and Management Director to modify an existing universal term contract for the option to purchase services for generator preventive maintenance, repair, and the rental of generators as needed with JD Power Systems. Once again, this would be primarily utilized by our Fleet Management and Facilities Management Divisions.
And this legislation, can you discuss why the option, rather than rebid, the portion of this contract previously handled by Cummins Bridgeway?
Yes. The Cummins Bridgeway universal term contract is set to expire October 31st of this year. They declined the option to renew. I don't have the notes with me on why they declined, but so that we didn't lose the generator services for Cummins Bridgeway, our Purchasing Office determined that it would be best, just for expediency, to modify JD Power's UTC to allow them to provide those services until they can rebid the entire universal term contract next year.
Thank you, so that we don't have a delay in getting the generators and then rebidding it. Okay.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Our next ordinance is Ordinance 2705-2017. This seeks authority for the Finance and Management Director to enter into contracts for the option to purchase equipment and services with HYO Incorporated, Sutphen Corp., and Michael Yost, doing business as TechSource LTD. These would be for sole source parts and services that are used by our Fleet Management Division to repair city vehicles.
These are for, this is for estimated $240,000, and again, specifically for vehicles, specialized equipment, for like, for example, Sutphen, whose services are fire platforms, that if there were some parts that we needed for our safety vehicles, that we would be able to get those parts pretty quickly so that we can stay in operation.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you.
The next ordinance for your consideration is Ordinance 2720-2017. This seeks authority for the Finance and Management Director to enter into a contract on behalf of our Office of Construction Management with Newcomer Concrete Services, and this would be for pavement restoration for the Division of Fire at several different fire stations.
And will this be complete before the fall, before the winter?
Unfortunately, no. The goal is to certainly get started and complete as much pavement restorations as possible, but it's all, as you know, weather-dependent, and it could, you know, stretch into the spring, depending on how severe fall and winter we have.
Three fire stations and then two other asphalt lots, concrete and asphalt?
That's correct.
Thank you. And this is for $1,144,589.
Yes.
Thanks.
Our next ordinance is Ordinance 2726-2017. This seeks authority for the Finance and Management Director to expend $221,000 in the Construction Management Capital Improvement Fund to reimburse the general fund for construction and building renovation expenses incurred by the Office of Construction Management.
Thank you.
Our next ordinance this evening is Ordinance 2743-2017. This seeks authority for the Finance and Management Director to enter into a contract with SGI Matrix LLC for security system parts, installation, maintenance, monitoring, repair, and support services for the various facilities under the purview of the Facilities Management Division and the Real Estate Management Office.
Can you share why we will be waiving competitive bidding on this ordinance?
Sure. SGI Matrix was formerly known as Zentry, and they provide, not just for City Hall and the municipal campus, but also for other city departments, our badge readers, our security cards, the software that controls those systems. And so in order to sort of maintain that continuity and also to have a vendor that can do warranty-related work on those systems, we wanted to ask Council for authority to waive and continue using SGI Matrix as like a sole source provider for our security access systems.
If we did not continue to use them, then we would have to really reprogram, I mean, go out, rebid it, and reprogram our entire system.
That's correct.
Which certainly would not be cost-effective for the city.
No, it would not.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ordinance 2750-2017 is our next ordinance. This is, seeks authority for the Finance and Management Director to renew a contract on behalf of the Facilities Management Division with Windscapes for mowing, landscape maintenance, and snow removal services for locations under the purview of the Facilities Management Division.
And this contract is for $335,000, and this is the last year of this contract, and so we will be rebidding it next year?
Yes.
That's the plan?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Our next ordinance is Ordinance 2770-2017. This seeks authority for the Finance and Management Director to enter into a contract on behalf of the Office of Construction Management with Train U.S. Incorporated. This would be for the replacement of HVAC controls at the Columbus Police Academy.
Thank you. It is $480,748, and can you share why we would be waiving the competitive bidding on this particular legislation?
Sure. Our Facilities Management Division, in cooperation with Public Safety, have been trying to standardize HVAC controls, meaning not having different control systems for different buildings with different manufacturers. And what they've found is that when we're dealing with multiple entities that provide different controlling systems for different buildings, it's become very difficult to adequately control temperature and airflow and heating, and it can also be more costly when you're working with a different vendor who didn't actually supply actually supply the HVAC equipment, but are trying to give you the thermostat controls for it. So our Office of Construction Management did some due diligence and found that it would, in the long run, be cheaper for the city to use a train control system on train HVAC equipment.
Thank you.
Our next ordinance is ordinance 2772-2017. This seeks authority for the Finance and Management Director to enter into a contract on behalf of our Office of Construction Management with 2K General Company for the construction of a pole barn for use by the Department of Public Service.
And this shelter will be for storage for five CNG vehicles?
That is correct.
Thank you. And this is for $145,800?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
And our final ordinance for your consideration this evening is ordinance 2790-2017. And this seeks authority for the Finance and Management Director to negotiate and enter into a contract for contract energy supply. This also seeks a waiver of the competitive bidding provisions of Columbus City Code.
Thank you. And so we will negotiate prices for the electric supply from AEP for this legislation, correct?
Or potentially other outside vendors as well, President Protem Tyson.
And for 12 months, 17 months, two years, and then three years, and an option to go green for green energy, is that right?
That's correct.
And we've been engaged in recent years with bidding down our electric supply and have saved significant money, which is great. We need to be saving money at this time, and this largely corresponds with creating the energy manager position for finance because of that person's work, looking for ways for us to save money.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. And just really appreciate your efforts to make sure we get the best deal possible for our city and a better value for our resources.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I want to go back to the first piece of legislation. I think it's important for Councilmember Hardin that, which is the UTC for the electric vehicles. And I don't know, Councilmember Hardin, if you want to make any comments on this estimated $3 million spend on the electric vehicles?
Thank you again, President Protem. I was just reading over this piece of legislation, really excited about it, and really this is part of the city's commitment, is part of our smart Columbus program or project to switch from carbon-based vehicles to electric vehicles. And I'm really excited about this. It looks like 91 vehicles coming, and reading through, it looks like we're leasing them to learn how this works with cost savings in it. I missed that part of the hearing, so that's where my question was going to lie. How did we work out that part of the deal in terms of lease versus buy as we venture into this new space with these electric vehicles? I'm sure, again, I apologize for being late, but I was really, it's so funny, I was just reading this piece of legislation as you clocked.
Not at all, Councilmember Hardin. It's an excellent question. And essentially, the leasing vendor, which I believe is Mike Albert Solutions, if I have that correct here, yes, Mike Albert Fleet Solutions, they're essentially passing on to the city 50% of a federal tax credit that they're able to receive by obtaining electric vehicles. This leasing entity was, they were able and willing to pass along more of that federal tax credit to us than traditional retailers of vehicles like Byers and Riker. And so that's really, I think, when the leasing option became intriguing. And I will say, I forgot to mention this to President Protem Tyson, that our city auditor's office was engaged in that. So our purchasing office and our fleet management division and our director did present that to our city auditor, and they were, you know, they were okay with us proceeding in that direction.
As you mentioned earlier, the importance, because typically as a city, we don't lease vehicles, we purchase them. And so we just, I gave, asked him to give an example how this would really work. And so if we were to buy a 2018 Volt, Chevy Volt, and it would cost around $30,000, but even with, so with us leasing it for a year, we would pay half the cost upfront for this vehicle, but we're only going to pay $28,645 for the vehicle, as opposed to a $30,000. We pay half upfront and half when we then purchase the vehicle a year later, which is great. And also, I know that this is just for the vehicles, and I think you'll probably have legislation that will continue to help us with those charging stations because Vulcan, who this portion of the money is coming from, is only saying we can purchase the vehicles. And then the Columbus Partnership is to implement the electrification plan, which includes reimbursing the developers for installing electric vehicle charging stations. So we're excited about getting these vehicles and a number, I mean, most of our departments, a lot in development, I think Building and Zoning Services, a number of fleet that will have these vehicles, but we first have to get the charging stations in place. But we are, and we won't buy them all at one time, we'll be buying them over a period of time as we are able to get the charging stations. It's pretty exciting.
And we're hopeful, President Protem Tyson and Councilmember Hardin, to have that initial purchase of electric vehicles still in front of council this year, perhaps as early as November 20th. So as that firms up, I'll be sure, you know, I'm sure we'll let you all know that.
Do we know, I'm sorry, President Protem Tyson, do we know what departments will use these, this first rollout of vehicles?
Yes. I believe my notes show, police would receive 10 vehicles. As President Protem Tyson mentioned, Building and Zoning would receive approximately 50, and Fire would receive 15. Those are the numbers I'm seeing right now. I think those are pretty well set, but hopefully, like I said, we'll have something to present to all of you here soon.
Any more questions, Councilmember Hardin? I hope this evening's hearing has provided insight into the programs and community initiatives from Columbus Public Health, as well as finance-related legislation that's necessary to support our ongoing city operations. As residents, these hearings are an opportunity for you to learn and become engaged in issues that are presented. I would like to thank this evening's presenters from Columbus Public Health, Nancy Bechtel, the Chief Nursing Officer and Assistant Health Commissioner, from the Treasurer's Office, Deborah Lee, our treasurer, from the Finance and Management, Christopher Long, our Fiscal Manager, and City Council's Legislative Research Office, excuse me, especially Michael Kessler, who leads the Legislative Research Office, Matt Erickson, who staffs the Finance Committee, Alexis Pennell, who staffs Health and Human Services Committee, Nancy Prior Sully, who was part of the City Council's engagement team, community engagement team, the My Staff, Nicole Harper and Carl Williams, the hard-working team at CTV who make these hearings possible, and finally, the residents of Columbus who make our city the best place in the country to live, work, and to raise a family. And this hearing is now adjourned. Thank you.